Call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start this afternoon's work session with A and F. Mr. Craftcheck?
Okay, first off, we have Mr. de Blasio, our engineer.
Okay, thank you. First, here is the status for the two thousand nineteen utility and road program project. All of the utility work on eighty-seventh and eighty-eighth street is complete. Concrete work has started on eighty-seventh street and utility work has started on one hundred and fifth street. Next, we had a pre-con- pre-construction meeting on February twenty-sixth for the underground utility portion of the ninety-fourth Street sanitary sewer pump station project. At that meeting, the contractor indicated that they intend to start work the week of March sixteenth and proceed until the start of the summer season. We are in the process of obtaining a proposal for the construction of the remaining components of the pump station and are scheduled to present our recommendation to council at the March seventeenth meeting. That would essentially take us through all of the components for that pump station and move it on its merry way. Uh, next item, the one hundred and fourteenth Street bulkhead replacement is approximately seventy percent complete and ninety-fourth Street bulkhead replacement is scheduled to start the week of March twenty-third. Bearing an unforeseen problem, we will be completed ahead of schedule for the summer season. Uh, next item, the beach ADA ramply price- ramply placement project has been revised to align with the borough's budget and is scheduled to be advertised for public bidding this week. The new bid opening date is March seventeenth. On the assumption that we have a responsive bidder within budget, we're gonna put you in position to award that contract at the next meeting, which is two weeks from today. In regard to the two thousand twenty utility and road program, the survey of the roadways is approximately seventy percent complete. We continue to progress with the lifeguard building CAFRA application and we are targeting a March fifteenth submission date to the DEP. Lastly, we are currently working on concept plans for the Bayside Marina Improvement so that we can finalize the borough's Cape May County Open Space application, which is due for submit- submission April fifteenth. And we talked about that last Thursday in our meeting. That is my report.
Quick question. On the rebid for the ADA ramps, the beach, you think you're comfortable that we'll be able to award them next meeting and then you're comfortable that work gets done before?
Yeah, because the- the scale of it shrunk immensely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're talking two, we're, I believe, two ramps, right?
Two ramps with an alternate bid for a third, depending on how the- the bids come in.
Okay. And then the ninety-fourth Street sewage pump station, just so people know, we're looking to complete by- by this coming October.
Correct, with a hiatus of work in the streets for the summer.
Mm-hmm.
But yes. It might be the fastest sanitary sewer pump station ever built. On budget, on time. Bingo.
The open space application. So when do they do? When would that be due?
They- that application is due April fifteenth, so we essentially are gonna start the process. I'm gonna be providing, uh, Mr. Smith with a proposal to go through the, uh, the machinations of concept plans, et cetera, and get it refined to a point where we could submit.
Okay, so when would we see the diagram, so on and so forth, this- this meeting of the seventh? I guess we would have to approve that, correct, if it has to be submitted on the fifteenth?
If that's your pleasure.
Cause otherwise, that's the only- we- cause we have to get the approval to sign it, correct? We have to have council approval to sign it?
Uh, yeah, I guess technically there would be a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the application.
Okay, so we're gonna end up, we'll have that on the agenda for the seventh of April?
Yes.
So we have that paperwork complete, we can get the resolution passed, sign it?
Yes, so since we're at the date that we're at, we're getting close, so we're gonna be working quickly, so I'll be working hand in hand with, uh, Mr. Smith to, uh, get questions answered and get things refined and official.
Okay, so wait just one second. I got a little bit ahead of myself, cause we do have one meeting in between. So on the seventeenth, we can see what the proposal is and then we can do the resolution on the seventh. You think you can do that?
Yeah, I can- I can have the proposal over, what I would probably-
So council can review it on the seventeenth?
Uh, what are we doing?
Right, exactly. So that's what I'm saying. We will see this proposal on the seventeenth and then we can, if there's any changes we would wanna make to it for whatever reason, we would not be voting on it till April seventh. So that way too, all of council can discuss whatever it is that we're doing, exactly.
Well, just- just as a, some advance notice, we discussed this at A and F, uh, with Mark last Thursday. Um, and I think what we're looking at is, uh, in- in general, is it, is new elevated walkways repairs to all the bulkheads, if not replacing some of the bulkheads. Redoing the- the ramp to get it to at least six and a half feet, if that's all we can do.
Correct.
And, uh, all of the light fixtures, the light poles and whatnot, some of them are in danger of blowing over, so we're looking at redoing the light.
And changing, is this where we would change the ramp also? No, it's still gonna-
Just leave it there, just build it up at the end to get-
Okay.
Six and a half.
There was an, I think the idea was proffered that, and this has come up before in the past, to make a extra berm, if you will, at the top of that, to act almost as a-
Okay.
Permanent floodgate to get that up to elevation six something?
Yeah, just to remind council, we had did an evaluation in April of eighteen. We gave you several different options with pros, cons, and costs. And I believe the, uh, marching orders that were, that I was given at the last meeting was to raise the ramp from, I think it's like elevation four, we take it up to elevation six and also gives the borough the ability to put in a floodgate. If you can get to elevation six ba- based on the last eighteen years of tide data, you would only flood, we've only flooded twice, it was Sandy and Irene. So that's a major win to get it up to six. And if you put in a provision to put in a flood wall to get it to eight, then you- you comply with your requirements.
Would we be doing the bulkhead there, our bulkhead, in conjunction with this project?
Yes. So we had met with the county back in spring of eighteen, they, um, agreed that if we had to extend the bulkhead to provide for an elevated walkway, that would be acceptable.
Okay.
And I, and if I could just add something. So basically, time is becoming of the essence, so I was gonna get a proposal, uh, to Mr. Smith. But I thought we could maybe work at this as general engineering, cause I don't wanna lose the two weeks if it's possible, but we would start working on concept plans and throwing them at you. For you to decide, to put you in position for that, the seventh, I guess.
Right, just so, exactly. So we've got the se- we still have the seventeenth, a meeting in between, but, so there is time for everybody to have an understanding of what it is, to ask any questions they may have, just so everybody sees whatever it is we're gonna be voting on.
Cause I would even take the- the risk to start doing the work, cause I wanna get your concepts for you to start to chew on.
How much wiggle room is there after that deadline and we submit? Is there, uh, my understanding is that there is some room for variation from what, it's, you're not locked. I mean, you're-
Well, you're- you're kinda locked into the general-
Right.
Parameters, so-
But specifics can be tweaked.
That would go in on the fifteenth, and we would probably be called in to do a presentation within a couple of months after that. But essentially, what we put in, conceptually and generally, would have to be pretty accurate.
Right.
For example, we couldn't put that in and then come back and go, hey, we wanna put up a-
Right.
Building now. Um, so we would have to get it as tight as we could, given the timeframe.
And I think you mentioned in our A and F meeting, there's- there's, um, unusual, um, parameters with regard to funding for, I think specifically, your engineering services, isn't it fifty percent, which is an anomaly?
Yeah, so this is a s- a special open space enhancement where they would give you probably more money for construction than they normally would on a regular funding cycle, plus pick up fifty percent of the engineering, which they never, they don't normally do.
Right. So this is an opportunity that we shouldn't-
Yeah.
Just pass out.
So you're good with that timeline then?
If we had a couple more months, it'd be even better, but it is what it is. We'll make it work.
Okay, okay.
Well, and- and don't forget the one, I guess, maybe even the biggest consideration besides the bulkheads, is you wanna, we wanna bring up the parking lot so that it drains to the edges, we'll get rid of the bowl effect and have more of a, excuse me, a camber to it, which we don't have now. The water will run off.
And I think the other general theme was you basically have a sea of asphalt, an impervious surface, there isn't anything green there at all, and we would wanna beautify that too.
And don't you usually have some kind of an idea whether or not it's a pro- it's a project that the county is frowning upon or one that they're supportive of before you, you have like preliminary discussions with them?
Yeah, we actually had two. The first one I did with Jill in the spring of eighteen and they were very receptive with the exception of the boat ramp reorientation. And then we had another one recently and they were receptive to everything we pitched at them.
Good, okay. Okay.
Next up, we have tax collector.
Madam Mayor, Mayor's Council, good afternoon. Um, so I have a general announcement, um, regarding the homesteads. The state mailed out the workbooks, the workbook applications this week and the deadline for anybody that's filing that is November second. You received my collector's annual statement of receipts and I will reiterate, I'm very proud to say, my percentage of collection again was ninety-nine point four zero, which is really good. I'm working on the month-end reports. Tax delinquencies were mailed out and, uh, we're getting inundated with water bill calls with them, so we're busy. Does anyone have any questions for me? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Margaret Tax Assessor.
Good afternoon. I haven't been here since December, so, did you miss me?
You know what, I, yeah, I was gonna say I didn't notice.
Anyway. Just a couple of things. Um, since January first, we've had twenty-eight total de- deeds. Of those deeds, nineteen were usable cash transactions. Um, we got our prelim- preliminary ratio for two thousand twenty, it's ninety-four point nine eight percent compared to two thousand nineteen, which was one oh one point four percent. That indicates, um, an increase in, um, market value of the borough. As the, as the ratio goes down, the value goes up. Um, and that was six point four two percent increase. Tax appeals, we're cleaning up two thousand nineteen tax court cases. Um, we have about five left in two thousand twenty. So far, I have no county tax appeals. I have one tax court case and I'm assuming that's due to the, um, the market being, what do we call it, bare? Anyway, um, and then I've done some certified lists for, three for the borough, which were labor-intensive, and nineteen for taxpayers for bulkheads, zoning board applications and whatnot. So that's what I've been up to. Any questions? Thanks so much.
Nice work.
Thanks. Have a nice evening.
Construction and zoning, Ray and Mike.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You going first?
Sure. The, uh, certificate of title transfers are actually down from a year ago, down to two for February, um, so it's been progressively down since I've been here, three years in a row. However, the zoning permits and construction revenue has been up due to construction. Um, actually zoning permits are up quite a few, from seventeen last year up to thirty-two this year for the same timeframe. Um, last night, the zoning board approved a deck expansion with a roof over the deck on ninety-eight oh one Third Avenue in the waterfront business district. To within three, three point something feet of the established bulkhead line, but it's, uh, the actual bulkhead is still about fourteen feet from, cause the established bulkhead line there is way back from the bulkhead, so. It's not that bad end with the zoning district being the, um, waterfront business with all the businesses you have there and stuff. This is for a single-family residence, so they approved that. And, um, finally, the, uh, application, the final step in the yacht club renovations they did, which was the parking lot, I have that application on my desk. It's for the parking lot and that should be coming before the planning board soon. I'm just waiting on the planning board engineer to, uh, deem it complete.
That's where the width of the space is, correct?
Yes, they, they, yes.
As well as zoning is doing, um, well over the last month, the same thing with the, they kinda go together with the construction. The amount of permits that we had is consistent with last year, a thirty-five total building permits, um, along with all the other subcodes that, uh, that coincide with it. Uh, we had three demolitions last month, two new home permits come in, uh, which, uh, again is consistent with what we had last year. The, uh, Villa Maria site, uh, we just got a notification from the DEP that they're, the company that is doing their CAFRA work, uh, submitted an application to the DEP. So we- we just got a notification. We haven't gotten a permit yet, we haven't gotten anything for zoning or any subdivision, uh, but this is the- the start of the process for them to get their CAFRA approval first. Our job sites are, I think we're looking pretty good over the last, uh, month, uh, compared to last, uh, it's still the same, really. I think we have a hold of them fairly well.
Complaints are minimal?
Yeah, they are. Uh, we still get them, but, uh, just handle on a day-to-day basis. Been minimal. Easy to handle.
Okay, good.
About it for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sue, our borough clerk.
Uh, for the borough clerk's office, uh, for the month of February, we had three boat slips, six thousand two hundred dollars, eight boat trailers, one thousand two hundred dollars, sixteen sale craft permits, four thousand dollars. Two certified copies for twenty, two parking permits for four hundred and fifty, and one marriage license. Uh, total for the month is eleven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents.
How many boat slips are left, if you know?
I have four left. If anybody's interested.
Jim?
Good afternoon. Um, I just had two things. One, I just wanted to mention again, we got the rating increased to double A-plus. And I didn't know if you wanted to spend any time going over the slides at all, or the presentation, or, uh?
Did anyone go over them tonight, or did you wanna wait to, we'll be doing the actual presentation in two weeks?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know if there was any tweaking you wanted to do at this moment, at, you know?
Did you, on A and F, did you guys see anything that you wanted to? My only suggestion was leave those last ones in.
Okay, so I wanna-
So when we put it on the website, the public can see that. It was, Jim had sent out the preliminary, um, presentation, so we're gonna get it on the website and all that after the actual presentation. But otherwise, no, I thought it looked good.
Okay.
Did you? Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, really, well, well done, good job.
Okay, thank you. I'll make sure it's attributed.
And Bob?
Good afternoon. The, uh, I've been asked tonight to speak on, uh, path to progress and shared services in general. A couple of weeks ago, the mayor had forwarded to my attention a news article, which was fairly inflammatory, but I- I wanna get into it and maybe explain what I know. And what I think we should be doing from here on out. Uh, the newspaper article was entitled, "Cut two hundred eighty-two New Jersey school districts?", question mark. "New demands after scathing New Jersey report." That was the headline of the, the news article, and apparently that news article was written in response to an SCI, uh, State Commission on Investigation, uh, report that came out February twenty-first. And basically, that report, uh, had shown that there were sixteen municipalities that essentially, uh, were characterized as being abusive. Uh, when it came to the care of tax dollars, specifically as it related to compensation, uh, and pensions. But nevertheless, that SCI investigation prompted a renewal or an extra effort, uh, to take a look at path to progress. And path to progress is, I guess, the brainchild of Steve Sweeney, along with, uh, tru- it's truly a bipartisan effort. Uh, it's not just, uh, the president of the senate, but it's, uh, both the Democrats and the Republicans in the Assembly and in the Senate working together, saying that certain, uh, fundamental changes need to be made in the state of New Jersey. And so what we are concerned with, uh, today, or what I'm concerned with, is what does that mean, uh, for the education system in Stone Harbor and in Cape May County? What does it mean for us as a municipality? Uh, what are the committee members on path to progress looking to and what does it possibly mean for us? And while I certainly don't have all the answers, I think this is a good jumping off place where we can get a start. Uh, the most, uh, I guess alarming piece of information that was in that news article and has been, uh, the subject of a lot of conversation around the borough. Is that there is a push to consolidate or combine or to regionalize K through tel- K through twelve completely. And so, of course, in Avalon and Stone Harbor, we have those lower grades, which, uh, potentially would be combined with another, uh, school dris- or a regional school district. It could be multi, uh, municipalities, or it could be county. And the reason why I say it might be county is because as part of, uh, path to progress, uh, there are two pilots in the state of New Jersey which will be funded. Excuse me, which will be advancing county-wide regional school districts. Uh, we've never seen that before in the state of New Jersey. We have seen regional school districts that are one, two, three, maybe four municipalities, but nothing as large as a county. So beyond the information of, uh, the state saying, we're going to regionalize, we're going to force it, I don't have much more information. And I did do quite a bit of, uh, research, uh, but one of the proposals that I have today is that we, uh, you know, after we listen to this, we take action by contacting our legislators. Our legislators in the first district have access to the Office of Legislative Services, which is the nonpartisan research group, uh, that's available to, uh, both sides of the aisle in the state legislature. Uh, it's almost like the Office of Management Budget at the federal level. The second area, uh, and I saw, I'm sorry, I don't have answers because truthfully, I haven't been able to find them. I think at this point, it's, uh, basically broad policy objectives that, as I say, the devil's in the details and we need to find out what the details are because it potentially, uh, does have a significant impact on the borough. The second aspect of path to progress is, um, at- at this point, I would characterize it as, uh, study and promoting and, uh, you know, allocating money to, um, you know, shared services and joint projects. And basically, it's a looking at type of phase, uh, with some incentive money. And, um, I get the sense that- that study and promotion is soon going to migrate and convert to mandate. I think that's eventually where they're heading. There is only one exception to the language that suggests that we're only, we're only at the study and promotion stage. And that is with respect to municipal courts. Within the recommendations, it says, "Require the merger of municipal courts with small caseloads, as recommended by the New Jersey Supreme Court Committee on Municipal Court Operations, Fines, and Fees. And develop proposals to address other issues raised by that committee." So that appears to be the only language that is tangible where there is, uh, going to be a mandate sometime in the short future, I believe. So I guess the recap, we're kinda at a very preliminary stage. I can tell you, based on what I've researched, that both sides of the aisle, Democrats and Republicans, have decided that, uh, in order to preserve, further preserve our pension systems, to preserve, uh, a quality of life when it comes to the tax impact, uh, for the residents of the state of New Jersey. And for achieving the goals that we wanna achieve, education, highways, transportation, public safety, that these legislators believe that we must move to regionalization, to joint operations, to shared services. There are no details that I'm aware of at this point. I think what we do is we write a letter to our legislator saying, hey, we're aware of this. Uh, it causes us some concern, notwithstanding the fact that we're generally supportive, uh, of joint operations because it saves money, but we have some concerns. Uh, please share with us the information that you have so that we can share it with our residents and taxpayers. So, I mean, that's the broad overview of what I found in my research.
As I had asked, um, I'd asked Bob if there's something we should be more proactive about and not be reactive a year from now and just have to react to some mandate. If there's something we should be looking at now, and as well as the Board of Education, should they be doing something proactive? So it just was like a, a first couple of steps here to really look at the path to progress. We've been asked in the past to, um, pass resolutions supporting it and we have not done so yet because when I looked at the details, it's like, well, are we ready to pass a resolution in support of something where we're not familiar with the details? Let's get some details and see whether this is a resolution that we are comfortable passing. So this has been kind of about six to eight months, I think, floating around, what are we gonna do with this? So it's good to get some preliminary information. I do, um, and, you know, I'm asking you guys too, I do support reaching out to our legislators and saying, can you get us some information? We've got some concerns and so on. I would be supportive of that. And I don't know if there's anything formal we should be doing with the Board of Education, asking them to look at things. I, you know, I'm kinda looking for some advice, uh, here as far as, you know, what, should they be engaged more? Should we be sending them some kind of notification, asking them to become engaged?
I- I think it's beneficial to have a unified voice. And if the school board and the governing body of the borough of Stone Harbor says, we are very interested in this and we need to know the details, and in some respects, we're concerned. And we're here as a unified voice representing, uh, you know, the taxpayers of the borough of Stone Harbor, the children that are in our educational systems, and the residents that we serve through municipal services.
And nobody seems to be able to answer the question, how would the taxes be structured?
I don't think they know, honestly.
Cause we always say, how then, how would this affect us and how would the taxes be structured?
I think no matter how they structure them, it's gonna be expensive for us. It's gonna be expensive for our residents. So I think we need to, we need to initiate this inquiry, and I think it should be joint, because I think the biggest impact from all these shared services is gonna be through the school system.
I would agree.
We're gonna get taxes like middle township looks at.
Yes.
Bob and I were talking about this earlier today and, um, he used the number of, um, the average cost of education for a child in the state of New Jersey today is about eighteen thousand dollars. And I don't know if this is a proposal or a suggestion or an idea, but the idea would be to, uh, propose to whomever that the borough of Stone Harbor would be willing to pay eighteen thousand dollars per child in order to educate the children, since that is the average cost of education in the state of New Jersey. Rather than go through a tax increase where the borough of Stone Harbor is now under the jurisdiction of, uh, middle township and paying middle township's tax rates.
Well, I think that would be nice, but I don't think it'll work that way.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
And is it even legal?
Given the-
It would be, that would, that's the ideal, but-
That's fabulous.
Why would we, why would we agree to pay any more than the average of what-
You may not have a choice on agreeing. They're gonna, you know, it might come down to, as an edict, that this is how it's gonna be. That's why I think we-
So we don't get a voice in?
Well, that's, and that's what we need to find out, right? Do we, yes, we need to find out, do we ha- do we have a voice? Do we need a collective voice? Do we need our, our residents to start reaching out to elected officials, to legisla- what do we need to do to get our voice heard? And that's kinda, I'm hoping what we can begin now, and if it is, you know, eighteen thousand dollars for every child within our municipality, times twenty, that would be our school tax. But I just don't know if that's something that would be legal.
I- I would write the check tomorrow, but I, I am not, uh, I- I'm not sure they would agree to that.
Yeah.
And trust me, I'm not sure if I was, uh, spot-on when it came to the true cost. I think it's around eighteen, give or take, a- I think it's around 18, give or take a couple.
Right.
But I just want to read one sentence, and if the legislature were to do anything that would deviate from this, I think that we need to bring it to their attention. It says here, "School districts with less than 1,000 students cost taxpayers 10% to 15% more per pupil than larger districts and are unable to provide as diverse a curriculum." And so we're probably paying more than the extra 10 to 15%. That sentence, to me, implies that it is the goal to reduce that higher cost for school districts with less than 1,000 employees or less than 1,000 students. And so therefore, any proposal that would be more than what we're actually paying, I would say is contrary to the terms of the report because the report is saying, it is essentially, what it's saying is, our goal is to reduce that additional 10 to 15% for the smaller municipalities. So if they were to come up with a proposal that's more than what we're paying, I think it's contrary to the terms of this document itself. That's the argument that I would make.
Again, I think it's because of our unique situation and the assessment of properties within the borough that, on paper as written, seems like a great idea for small areas with students less than 1,000. But as it plays out here in our unique circumstances, it's exactly as you put it. It'll end up being the opposite of what is intended, and it'll be burdensome rather than relief.
In my opinion, the only recourse we really have is to get our legislators on board, and I know they will be, because they are the ones that represent our interest in Trenton, and these decisions are going to be made in Trenton. And just, that's representative democracy, that's the way it works. They're going to go up there and they're going to fight for our best interests, and that's what we need to rely upon. So we need to convey to them, it's very important to us, this is like a number one or close to a number one priority, and we're paying attention, and we need your help.
I agree.
So do we need to, I mean, we need to some way formally authorize?
Do we, yeah, do we need to do anything, or Bob just can?
If you're on board with that, he can reach out.
Okay.
He's not, he didn't take any formal action.
Okay. And then just can keep us apprised of the contacts and so on? Good. Thank you. Thank you.
And Planning Board.
Oh, we still have the shore protection resolution? Bob, do you have that? Who has that?
I don't have it.
The shore protection resolution?
Bob, you also wanted to go over how were purchase orders, where you do that?
The shore protection resolution is something that the county passed. You got it? Okay.
I do apologize. I do not have it here.
Okay, but you know the whole...
I'm not as well-versed on that resolution as what I was on this. I read it briefly. It's one of, I mean, for lack of a better way of describing it, it's one of those resolutions which, as I think you, Mayor, you described it this way, it's a no-brainer. It's something that is absolutely in our best interest to support. And I don't have the details, but when I read it, I wish I had it here with me.
I'll see if it's in my email. The county passed it at their last meeting. Freeholder Pearson contacted us and sent us a copy, asking that we consider passing the resolution as well. The nuts and bolts, as I remember it, is there is a shore protection fund that has an annual balance of 25 million, and the resolution is to double that to 50 million, and it has not been increased in, I want to say, 25 or 30 years.
Yes. That was the essence of it.
And so before we were, you know, to go ahead and support that resolution, wanted to just bring it forward for discussion to see if any members of council had any questions about it or anything. Otherwise, we can bring it forward in two weeks to support that.
What I can do is I can make sure that each member of council receives a copy of it tomorrow, either by email or in their mailbox, just so they'll have that two weeks to take a look at it. It's very self-explanatory when you read it, and it's absolutely in our best interest to support it, just by nature of who we are and what our community is.
I can't remember where the money comes from.
It's real estate.
It's a real estate, transfer tax, it's something within real estate, yes, that's what it is. That's why I couldn't remember where the balance came from. So it comes from real estate transactions, yes. And the last time it was increased, 25 years ago, Jim, right, 25, 30 years ago? So right now, it generates 25 million, they want to double that to 50 million. So we'll go ahead, do what you said, and send copies of the resolution to all the council, and then we'll put it on the agenda for two weeks for a vote.
Councilman, did you want me to speak to that issue, or?
I, that's fine, if you could, just with the way we're going to handle purchases.
Sure. I wrote everybody an email today, and I also placed that new email in some of your boxes. The A and F Committee met last week. Jim and I had made a suggestion to changing the requisition purchase order process here in the Borough of Stone Harbor. Right now, the process is, all the purchase orders are circulated to the chairs and that they execute that document, the purchase order, before final payment is actually sent out. By the time that that document gets to you and you execute it, signature, we're already contractually obligated to pay the bill. And basically, the purpose of your reviewing it is to make sure that there's no fraud or no mistake. So what we thought was better is that we would prepare a detailed bill list segmented by your departments so that each of you could look at the bill list with the appropriate details and sign off on the bill list. We thought it would be less cumbersome. That does not change our system as required by the ordinance here in the borough, where each chairperson has to pre-approve, before we're obligated, contractually obligated, pre-approve any expenditure that's $5,000 or more. So that doesn't change. What will be changing is the actual circulation of purchase orders that we often see at council meetings. We will see it, tonight's the last night, hopefully. But just the circulation of purchase orders, we thought it would be less cumbersome. And we're not giving up or compromising any of the internal controls as required by our CFO, by our auditors. And so if anybody is alerted to any issues on a bill list, we'll just pull the details and go over it with you. That's the essence of the change.
It's really, changes the composure of it to be more proactive than reactive because that, like Bob mentioned, at the point in time we're signing these, the obligation to pay is already there. The only reason you would refuse to pay is if there was some dispute contractually with the work or materials delivered or, you know, services delivered. So I think this gives us a little more visibility ahead of the curve rather than after the fact as to what...
So is there going to be one list that gets signed off by the six?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Jim said that he's able to segment it according to the chair's responsibility, so it'll be easier for the chair to go through it. It's really just an abbreviated purchase order is what you're going to be seeing. It's going to be on a sheet that's continuous, segmented by your departments. And again, if there's any council member that's alerted to something or they want more information, we have that documentation as a backup. If all the documentation, we can pull it.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
So I have changed my report from the Planning Board report to the mayor's report, which will include a Planning Board report because there's other meetings and things that I attend along the way that I would just like to make sure that council is up to speed on. So I'll start with the Planning Board and then go into a couple of other areas where you'll be interested in some information. So the last Planning Board was Monday, February 10th, and the Planning Board approved an application for a minor subdivision of 10315 Sunrise Drive, a bayfront property. The applicant on that subdivision was Charles Street Developers, which is owned by Charles Craftcheck. Charles recused himself from the hearing. The existing lot is 10,702 square feet with 150 feet of frontage on Sunrise Drive. The application approved proposed subdividing the lot into two smaller lots, one 5,447 square feet, the other 5,256 square feet, with both lots having 75 feet of frontage on Sunrise Drive. Also at the meeting, the Planning Board engineer told us that he expects to have drafts of ordinances that would outline the parameters of outdoor dining and valet parking, ready for the board to review at our next meeting, which is Monday, March 9th. In addition, the subcommittee, because remember, we have those two subcommittees, which is outdoor dining and valet parking, and in addition, we have the committee that's looking at changing the zoning within the courts. We have been scheduled to meet this Wednesday, March 11th, but it looks like we're playing with that date. That's not going to work out, but we're going to be meeting, I'm going to say, within 10 days. We'll get something on the calendar to discuss the courts. In addition, on moving from Planning Board to an item of interest, February 19th, I met with representatives of the company Orsted, along with the administrator. I mean, as you will recall, Orsted did come before us about the wind turbine project that's going to be off the coast of New Jersey. So they're starting to really center in on some details of that project, and representatives of Orsted are traveling the coastal area. Sorry. That is most affected in meeting with representatives to provide details. One of the things that we learned is you are going to be able to see these turbines from our beaches on a clear day, which is something, if you'll remember, initially, there was a leased property that was off the area of Cape May Point. There was a chance that there was going to be some turbines there. At this time, there's not going to be. These turbines are going to be off the coast of Atlantic City. Now, however, there's going to be 90 to 99 of them. They're 850 feet high. They're going to be located 21.7 miles from the north point of Avalon, which is 18.4 miles of the north point of Stone Harbor. There's going to be approximately 1.8 miles, I think they, what's an nautical mile, 1.8? Who knew?
I don't remember.
Anybody know what an nautical mile is? I think it's 1.8.
1.2.
It's 1.2. There are going to be a nautical mile between them, and there's going to be 90 to 99 of them. One of the things they showed us, they have this big picture book where they show you what it's going to look like off your beach, and they're doing this all down, up and down the coast. So they're showing Ocean City and so on and so forth, and they show what it's going to look like from the Stone Harbor beach. They're going to get us those pictures, we just saw them in this big book. They're going to get us those pictures, we're going to get them on the website so people have an idea of what this is going to look like. They're also going to be starting to do public presentations throughout different municipalities and giving folks an opportunity to see exactly what's coming. I did offer for us to host one of those presentations because I think it would be advantageous that it is taped and made available for anybody who can't attend a presentation, and we would even make that link available to Orsted so they could use it for anybody who wants to see this presentation. Their concern is information getting out there that is not accurate, even from those who attend the presentation. So they were actually thrilled to hear that we could tape it and it would be shared in a way that isn't word of mouth, that it's their actual presentation. Their timeline is, they're going to start doing these public presentations the end of this year, 2020, and the beginning of next year, 2021. Construction is anticipated to begin in 2022, and will go through 2024, and the hope is for the turbines to be operational by 2015. So as soon as we get those pictures, we can get them on the website, we can alert everybody that we have them. And one of the things they suggested too is we could actually put one in the borough hall when you come in. We can actually have one of the pictures sitting there, and you can see what they're going to look like from our beach. The other thing, last night, I attended a meet and greet with members of the Pine Lands Preservation Alliance that was hosted by Senator Testa and the League of Conservation Voters, unbeknownst to me, but apparently this has been in discussion in Natural Resources. The Pine Lands Preservation Alliance actually doesn't do just the pine lands. They're a nonprofit organization that, not only are they committed to the protection of the pine lands, but also to conservation in general. They wanted, they're trying to engage municipalities to, they would like to join us in proactivity in dune management. They manage a lot of state properties, but very few, if any, I don't even think they have, no municipalities, I think at this point, is what they said. I can't remember, and if they did, it's like one.
Nothing that's municipally controlled.
No, okay. So it's just state land. It's just state land. So this was just a meet and greet that the senator put together, and we were invited to. It was interesting to listen to, I didn't know that the pine lands does anything with dune management. We did get a contact, and the Director of Conservation, the administrator, has the contact information, and he did share with me today, Bob did, that Natural Resources had looked at this, possibly a partnership, in August of 2019 and in May of 2019. And the last time it was looked at, it was, well, at this point, there's no need, don't feel like there's any need for a partnership with them?
From what I could tell by reading the minutes, and maybe Councilwoman Rich has more details, but what I could tell from reading the minutes was, the Pine Lands Preservation Alliance made the presentation to us, and our former Public Works supervisor, I don't recall the name.
Craig.
Craig.
Craig Reese.
Basically said, "No, thank you." But I also said that I'd be willing to sit down and listen, maybe there's a change, and Grant and I can, you know, have a listen, maybe with Councilwoman Rich, and see what they have in mind.
Yeah. And we did entertain them. They did come down, we drove the beach. What they want to do, or what they presented last year, was if this is our dune fence, here are our dunes. What they wanted to do was to plant, they didn't say at the time, put another fence in front of it, but they wanted to plant in front of our dunes all the way, in places where it could work, in front of our dune fence. And they're, they were wonderful people, it was a great experience. We rode all the way up and down the beach to show them our beach, which I don't think they had ever seen before because they were awed by it, but they also saw that what they do, we could have found maybe two or three places that that idea would work.
Yeah. Because even in conversation with them, I said that we get really high tides that then just take it out, where we've got the really thin beaches, except for a handful of places.
Right.
And I said, "Do you do just that small of an area? Would you do that?" They said they would, that they're not, it's not like an all or nothing approach.
Yeah. And we did not really say no, but when they saw what we had compared to, I guess, wherever else they'd go, they understood our profile of our beach a little better. I'm not saying it's a, you know, a definite no. However, we all know how our beaches do change, and those dunes and the fence and everything. You know, you plant something there, and we don't really want to keep trying to go out much farther than where we are right now. I think, you know, we're blessed, but they were very nice. We accommodated them, we listened to them. It was a beautiful day on the beach and...
Which was interesting because they never, when I sat and spoke with them last night, never said that they were here.
Maybe it's different people. When I was talking to Bob today...
Because I'd said something about Stone Harbor, and I said, "We just have one or two places," and there was never, "Oh, yeah, I know that," or anything to that, "We've seen it." There was, so perhaps it is a different, I don't know.
It must be two different people. We probably have the name of the people that we took for the ride on the truck that day. But again, we looked into it, and I think it might work somewhere. I don't know that it would be real effective here, but that doesn't mean it's a no. I mean, we don't listen to anything.
And Bob's got the contact information for their director?
Yeah, I communicated with him this morning.
Okay.
I reached out to him. I said that we would be interested in sitting down and just listening. I said that we would be interested in sitting down and just listening. Interestingly, if I remember correctly, last night, they said they do no planting. And what they do is they put up like a small fence, which allows the sand to go up against it and then the vegetation that is already there reseeds itself, which is different from what I'd read in the minutes.
Yeah, so maybe they're trying a different angle.
Yeah, they did say that. The seeds are there. They said, "We don't, the seeds are there." They did say that. So something to look at.
Yeah.
And one last thing. Mayor's Wellness Campaign is not going well. I don't always just give you good news. And it's, at this point, it's not, I don't know why. Tina and I are working on trying to figure out why this session is not getting the same attendance as we've had in the past. Perhaps it has run its course. I am getting some criticism that it wasn't advertised well enough. We did put it in the paper. We did put it on Facebook, website, Langston Press, Herald, so on and so forth. We're two weeks in and it's poorly attended. I'm disappointed, but what can you do? Maybe we'll try again next year. Maybe we won't. I don't know. And that is about what I have. Any questions on any of it? Thank you for listening.
And that concludes it. A and F.
So we'll move on to Public Works. Raymond?
Yes. Public Works last met on the 27th, which I think was last Thursday. Mr. Moore, Mr. Kraftcheck, myself, the borough engineer and Grant and the borough administrator. The borough engineer's already updated you on the 2019 road program, the 94th Street pump station and the bulkhead work on 114th Street and 94th Streets. Some of the bigger, Grant's going to update you on the workload and whatnot. Some of the things, the Public Works is working with the borough administrator and the garden club on the placement of some additional urns throughout town. We're advertising for co-op purchase of a modular restroom for 95th Street and also a new trash compactor, trash truck. We still have employment issues. Four permanent employees were down. So I guess you still don't have a mechanic. There was no mechanic, so you may look at shared services to get mechanical work done on your vehicles.
On emergencies only.
Mark filled us in on the ADA bid that's going to go out for a couple of ramps. And I think, other than one other item, we did, Grant and I and the borough administrator and the OEM met with the representative from Aqua Fence at the ramp last week to see what his solution is, temporary solution to the low ramp to control the flooding. And I think he has a very good product. He gave us a proposal, but Grant also has a possible solution. So I think we're going to try Grant's first.
I think we might be setting it up tomorrow.
Before we make any decisions going forward, okay? I think this Aqua Fence is around 13,000 or 14,000, his estimate came in at. But bit cumbersome in that you got to get out there every day and place it, you know, when you know you're going to have a flood. So I think they're kind of the highlights and Grant can take it from here.
What's your fence? What's your proposal for this fence?
Their fence is a permanent fence. Once you know the storm is coming, you're going to have flood tides. It has to be deployed prior to the storm. The concern is clambers. The wetlands institute, Coast Guard uses that ramp to get their boats in and out. They would have to be notified if we have a storm during the hurricane season. We have to notify all of our boat owners that are running slips to get them out. They don't get out by the time we put the ramp up, then they're both stuck.
Okay.
I have a deployable that will go, work with the tides. We're going to try it out. I believe tomorrow, we're going to try to put it in the ramp because tide schedule, I believe, is around 1 o'clock is high tide.
Okay.
Deploy it in the morning, take a video of it, put a camera out there and do a time lapse. Try to catch the incoming tide and the outgoing tide.
Okay.
And it only costs us 1,400.
I like that.
So wait, how does that?
It's a significant difference.
How will that work with, when you say it works with the tides? How will that work?
It fills up.
It fills up. There's, it's, it has baffles. It lays flat, so if somebody wants to get their boat in and out, they can drive over it. And as the tide comes up, it opens up the baffles.
Okay.
And stops the water from coming in.
Good, interesting.
Just to add a couple of things, the ramps from 80th Street to 89th Street have been renovated. They've been all been graded, new gravel. Actually, it's infield mix because it doesn't have stones in it, which we get a lot of complaints from. New posts and rails were put up, all the way up to 89th. We did a lot of the south end last year, so all the crossovers, the walkovers are in good shape. The ADA ramps are a different story. Just to let you know, one of the worst ramps is the 111th Street that is going out for bid. That one's going to be redirected, so it doesn't have as many switchbacks to try to get people to use that more often than using the drive over ramp that is there. Let's see. We have three new docks were built for the marina, floating docks for renters' boats. The buildings department has given the wrecked apartment at 82nd Street a new coat of paint. I don't know if anybody's been in there, but it's changed color on the interior and they've done a great job at that. Also, the guys have been working out here on the 95th Street side. They put a new trash corral in, hoping to clean up that area so that the utilities department and anybody looking out the window towards the 95th Street side of the building, it's not going to be as unsightly as it has been through all the construction with the police department and whatnot. The grounds department is finishing up Paradise. They put some new bayberries in there and some river rock. They're also going to be doing the river, putting river rock to match the rock garden that we have across the street.
It looks great.
Or rain garden, I should say, sorry.
Rain garden.
Rock garden.
Coming over the bridge, it does make a difference.
It does, yes.
Very nice.
That area has been neglected for a while.
It looks good.
So, thank you. I'll let them know you said that.
Thank you.
And 94th and 3rd. On the 16th, they're going to start construction and they're going to tear up nine, the intersection area is going to be closed for quite a while. So it's going to affect the bank flow into the bank and for Wawa. So I just want you all to be aware of it. It's going to be closed for quite a while.
Who is "they"?
APS.
Okay.
That's part of.
And how long is long?
We're going to get a detailed schedule from them, which we're still waiting for, and then we will get on the ground and start knocking on some doors. That was made very clear at the pre-con last week.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's only two full-time residents on that, but we need to make sure that everybody.
Oh, what, on 94th?
Yeah, on the 200 block.
Yeah.
Yep. And one of them's in Florida right now, so.
You're probably looking at a couple of months and not having access to that driveway because they'll have to de-water that. Because that sanitary sewer is going pretty deep.
Okay.
So all the deliveries to Wawa is going to be off of 3rd Avenue, so they're not going to be able to get onto their property. So it's going to be a little chaotic for a while.
Okay.
Keep everybody heads up. And then they're going to be closing all of the 200 block of 94th Street to put the new infrastructure in there, leading up to 2nd Avenue.
So 3rd Avenue will be open? It's the 200 block that's going to be closed?
No, no. They're going to start on the 300 block and work their way towards the 200 block, but the whole entire street is going to be closed down during the day.
Okay.
During that construction. So just to be aware of it.
And the gas, the gas company is going to coordinate their stuff, right? With?
Yes, and we're going to be putting in underground roadway crossings for the electric, for underground services.
So I didn't ask, did you read your reports?
I did.
Yes. Okay.
Very detailed.
Utilities?
Utilities?
A summary of the activities of the Utilities Committee met February 25th. And the Utilities Department, they're busy at the time of the year. Reviewed in detail the 2020 budget. I guess we'll be seeing the results of that later tonight. In second session, right?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. The Utilities Committee also had submitted a list of areas of concern, primarily around billing and also the meter guidelines. So we discussed that and also discussed some possible changes to some of those areas for us to consider. Third, also went through our list of a half dozen different strategic priorities. Most important at this point is everybody has talked through as far as the sanitary sewer pump station at 94th Street. So that's the most sense of urgency, is topic of discussion. Also the station at 114th Street. And also some of the stormwater improvements from 80th Street to 104th Street. And I believe Grant has also some updates on some other items.
Just what we talked about with the sewer pump station construction that's going to go on. We used comparisons from January of 2019 to 2020. We used 800,000 gallons less than we did in 19. We used 3,578,000 gallons in 2020 and 4,433,000 gallons in 2019. So it wasn't as many visitors in town in January. It will be an influx as our road construction goes on. So our March numbers, when we present our February numbers and our, and our, wait. February and March numbers, you're going to see an increase because when we take out a sewer main, we have to flush it. And that's what the water is that you see running down 2nd Avenue right now. They have to flush the line, to purify the line and to get any sediments and debris out of the line so it doesn't clog the laterals. So that's why you see that flow. The flow that's going down 3rd Avenue is de-watering. They're taking the groundwater out. And that's why you see flow coming both directions while they're doing the work right now. So that is going to button up and then they're going to stop construction on those areas once they get the road open and they're going to go to 94th Street to start that construction. I believe that they're going to continue the construction on 118th Street, which is going on. There's a lot going on there. There's new storm drains going in, water sewer, underground utilities as for electric and communications, as well as reconstruction.
So just to add to what Grant said, there's going to be a point in time where this contractor, as you're aware, is going to put the 2019 roadway program into hibernation to do the 94th Street project pump station. So we're going to have to do a change order to give them a time extension only very shortly. Because originally, their contract was supposed to be completed in June. They're going to abandon that aspect to help us out with the pump station. So we would have to do a change order for time extension to the fall of this year.
So it'll pretty much be like the construction they did, I believe, in, on Golden Gate, where they came in, they put all the utilities in, put a, a, a surface down, not the finished surface down, and then they'll come back in the fall and get back on the project and finish the project up. As far as our ERTs and meters, I've had a conversation with Mark. We're going to need to go out to bid for that. So I would like to have another presentation by Neptune, which is the company that did a presentation to the Utilities Committee a couple of, I believe, last year and the year before that. We want to do it again for the new members that are on council so they understand what we're trying to do here. And then after that presentation, I believe we should get moving on, going out to bid for that.
Okay. Do you want that as a work session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
For the next, so in April?
Yeah, we're trying to.
Okay.
Communicate with Neptune right now and their schedule.
Okay.
Open by April 7th meeting, we can do that.
Okay.
If not sooner.
Okay.
If we can barge in on the next council meeting.
There'll be no barging.
And that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you, Grant.
Mark, one quick question. When are we scheduling 300 block of 89th Street? I thought it was on the schedule, but we moved it, right? And then it's.
300 block of 89th Street.
Right. Okay. If you don't know off the top of your head, that's okay.
I do have one more thing.
So that would, that would be in the fall.
This coming fall?
If that was in the 2019 road program, so they're currently working on 87th, 89th, 105th, and we had mentioned 118th. I think they're going to finish that up, take a hiatus and then come back and finish the rest of the project. So if that one street is in the 2019 road program, that would be scheduled for the, between the fall and December of this year.
They don't want to open up anything and not be able to finish the complete run from avenue to avenue.
They're going to finish the streets that they started with the utility work. They're not going to open up any new streets at this point because they have, they're going to be busy with 94th Street pump station.
So I went to the annual safety breakfast for the GIF this morning. And once again, the borough met all of their requirements for the safety incentives and we got our safety excellence plaque. That goes on the plaque that we have out front here. Luckily, we have one blank because unfortunately, I lost this in 2016, I believe. I lost that plaque. I don't know what happened to it. So next year, they're going to have to use a new plaque.
It fell from the podium.
So I told, I told our claims coordinator that we need a new plaque. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Anything else on A and F, Public Works Utilities? We have time for closed session. We do have one item that we wanted to take care of before regular sessions. So at this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go in the private session. We would appreciate if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back in the public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session or to simply adjourn. It is also possible that someone might bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. Resolution 2020 S-56.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer a resolution 2020-S-56 to go into closed session.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.